Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
Good evening and welcome to the Burbank City Council meeting on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. I would like to invite Reverend Casey Way from First Presbyterian Burbank to lead us in the invocation and flag salute. Will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute?
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, and residents and staff, thank you for the privilege just to come and open up our evening. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for another day, another day of life, another day of shalom that you have given to us, another day of peace. And with all the things happening in this world, we lay them down at your feet. We pray that whatever worries and distractions and concerns about family and work and you name it, we pray that you would help us just to trust that you are present in our lives. I thank you for our leaders, I thank you for our staff, and all of the many people that make the city of Burbank a place of light and a place of hope. We do lift up those in need tonight, we lift up the homeless, we lift up the children and youth in our city, we pray for families in need, we pray for those who are hungry, that you would be the great provider in their lives. For those looking for jobs, we pray that you would open up new opportunities. And most of all, we pray for the work that you've laid before us, we pray that you would help us to listen well, help us to trust the process that you've put in this space, in this meeting. And we give you thanks for all the many good things in this city we call home for so many, for it's in your name I pray, amen. And if you would repeat after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, the roll call, please. Thank you. Councilmember Frutos.
Hello, Madam City Clerk. Happy to be here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Springer.
Here.
Noting the absence of Mayor Gibeletti and Councilmember Telemontis. Thank you. Tonight, we have four announcements. Join us for a time of song, word, remembrance, and celebration as we honor our United States troops at the celebration, at the annual Veterans Day ceremony this Monday, November 11th. It is a special privilege this year as we will be presenting our newly renovated Macambridge War Memorial. This event will take place at the Macambridge Park War Memorial on the corner of Amherst and San Fernando on Monday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m., with a pre-ceremony concert beginning at 10:15 a.m. The Burbank City Council will not meet next week, Tuesday, November 12th, in observance of the Veterans Holiday. We will reconvene for a regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, November 19th, in the council chambers. I would like to ask our Madam City Clerk to please read the next announcement.
Thank you. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for an unexpired term until July 31st, 2020, on the landlord tenant commission. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, November 7th at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office or visit our website. I have another announcement for another opening. Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy Advisory Committee and Senior Citizen Board. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for the vacancies on each one of the following advisory bodies, the Santa Monica Mountain Advisory Committee and the City of Burbank Senior Citizen Board. The deadline to submit an application is Monday, December 2nd at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to invite Amy Hammett to the podium to introduce our first presentation tonight.
And I apologize for having my glasses, I'm going to bring attention to my glasses because someone's going to notice it, but they broke today. All right, so it's a new look. All right. Tonight, we are honoring the graduates of Burbank Recycle Center's 5th Master Recycler Training, now called Waste Warriors. Through classwork, field trips, and hands-on experience, the 25 residents behind me who finished the program gained valuable insights in not just recycling, but reducing their overall waste footprint through reuse, refuse, repair, salvage, composting, consumer advocacy, and more. Some of our Waste Warriors were inspired to create their own projects while others contributed to existing programs within their workplace, their children's schools, or volunteered at local nonprofits. All of the Burbank Waste Warriors are exploring new ways to save resources and share the information they learned with the community as part of their continued journey. We call that investment in them a multiplier effect that will pay off dividends for decades to come. These engaged residents have donated hundreds of volunteer hours to the city events and local groups, join boards, as well as develop their own special projects. We can always depend on our network to help out whenever we need. For some examples, Waste Warriors were pivotal in helping the Burbank Recycle Center with special outreach events such as helping with our Fix-It Clinics and hosting their own table at various National Night Out events, which is a community policing event that happened last August. Members of our current class and alumni recently joined forces to create a Burbank Eco Schools Council to develop waste reduction programs at their various children's schools. And we now have three, count them, three Waste Warriors on the Burbank Sustainability Commission, and wow, are they making things happen. So thank you all for setting a positive example and generously giving your time. You are helping to make Burbank a regenerative and more environmentally engaged community. And, side note, we'll be welcoming the sixth class starting January 11th as we continue to add committed zero-waste superheroes to our alumni network. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to invite members of the 2019 Burbank Waste Warriors to join me at the podium. Please come up. We have a recognition certificate for each of you. When your name is called, please step forward, then stay with us for a group photo. Great, okay. First, we have Donna Micali. Allison Micali. Margaret Erchiaga. Bobby King. Carrie Palio. Jean Hodges. Vicki Clark. Congratulations, thank you. Laura Tenenbaum. Izzy Yanes. Rebecca Allen. Jennifer Haber. Drew Aveling. Velvet de Obaldia. Tracy Tab. Elizabeth O'Brien. Heather Robb. Carolyn Raski. Kelly G. Eric Feat. Okay, you have Monica's?
I have Monica's, but I don't see her here.
Okay, so we will come together for a group photo?
And then I'd like to see Craig Hampel, who's a big part of this.
Yay!
Oh, did they?
You're awesome.
There she is.
Next, we would like to recognize and present the 2019 Burbank Recycle Center 3-R Award to Sarah Andrews. Before she comes up, Amy will share more about the recipient.
Burbank Recycle Center's 3-Rs Award, which is Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, was created to recognize local groups and individuals for innovation and commitment to the true tenets of waste reduction. Reduce, reuse, then recycle. This year's recipient is Sarah Andrews and her work as a member of Girl Scout Troop 2406. Five years ago, Sarah started her mission to reduce and remove single-use plastic when her troop competed in a LEGO Robotics Team project that involved following their trash to the ocean. After that, the troop worked with each of their schools to spread awareness about the issues of society's waste crisis and how it is destroying the natural world. But Sarah knew that just bringing awareness wasn't going to move the needle quickly enough. We needed policy and the support of local government to take the lead, and as a high school student and now a college student, she did her homework. Sarah, her team, and her incredibly supportive parents researched and learned about polystyrene, talked to foodware packaging companies, and met with local leaders. She and the Girl Scout Troop worked diligently for the past several years recruiting a scrappy, yet motivated group of anti-single-use kindred spirits made up of local activists, environmentally nonprofits, Burbank Sustainability Commissioners, and the Recycle Center's Recycling Coordinator, Craig Hampel, to join her in the mission. Sometimes, she also had to be very persistent when the adults got busy or just needed a gentle nudge. As they say, persistency pays off. These efforts certainly got the Burbank Recycle Center, I'm sorry, the Burbank City Council's attention. Last July, they unanimously passed a resolution for the Burbank Recycle Center to develop a local policy restricting polystyrene and single-use plastics for Burbank restaurants, food service facilities, and all city buildings and events. Yay! And this policy is being shaped and developed as we speak. Sarah, thank you for the vision and diligent commitment and push to move this forward. Without your gentle but persistent nudging, we might yet still be years away before we are able to find the bandwidth to do this incredibly important policy. Your dream, and the dream many of us share with this polystyrene policy, will help to get rid of single-use plastic and polystyrene cups, containers for years to come. And your legacy will live on much longer than the polystyrene would in the environment. Thank you, Sarah. Come up and get your award.
We present this to Sarah Andrews in recognition of receiving the Burbank Recycle Center 3-Rs Award, Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, in honor of your collaborative work to educate others about polystyrene use and your push to promote limiting its use in the city of Burbank. On behalf of the Burbank City Council, I commend your dedication to waste reduction and sustainability and wish you continued success. Thank you very much.
I just want to get out of the way. No, 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 you're not getting this.
Next, I would like to invite Barbara Howell from the Burbank Temporary Aid Center to join me at the podium as we proclaim the month of November as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month. Okay, City of Burbank proclamation to the Burbank Temporary Aid Center. Whereas Burbank Temporary Aid Center, or BTAC, was founded in 1974 to assist the homeless and poor in our community, and whereas BTAC has diligently worked for 45 years to fulfill its mission with the assistance of businesses, churches, and caring individuals who give of their time and resources. BTAC provides services including food, utility assistance, laundry, transportation, case management, employment assistance, and support for thousands of people each year. Whereas Burbank businesses such as the Brad Corb Real Estate Group, Entertainment Partners, IKEA, Nickelodeon, Sephora, Warner Brothers, and Pavilions have joined together with the Boys and Girls Club of Burbank, Burbank Police Officers Association, and Command Staff, National Charity League, Providence St. Joseph Medical Center, and other organizations to provide food, raise money, and create awareness for Burbank Temporary Aid Center. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Springer, Vice Mayor of Burbank, on behalf of Burbank City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month in the city of Burbank and wish them continued success for years to come. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you again for this proclamation. November is an important month for BTAC because BTAC Month is a time when we focus on not just raising money and collecting food, but sharing information and creating more awareness about the services that BTAC provides in the community, some that were mentioned already. We have a month filled with opportunities to support BTAC. We started last Friday with a volunteer recognition luncheon because we depend on over 65 volunteers every week to keep our operation going. And we thank you, Vice Mayor, for coming and sharing thoughts with our group. We also have an event this coming Thursday at Urban Press Winery, and we still have a few tickets available. And if you'd like to find out more, please either see our website or give us a call at BTAC. We have more information that will be going up on our Facebook and Instagram pages, and so you'll be able to see what's going on throughout the month. And we just hope that you will do two things. One is to support the groups that are supporting this effort this month, and also be aware of the people around you who are in need, who may need the help from BTAC, and encourage them to come to us to find some help and support, and people who care about where they are and what they're facing. So thank you again very much. Thank you. And the event is Thursday at Urban Press Winery, and that is on San Fernando Road between Orange Grove, no, excuse me, between Palm and Magnolia. It's a lot of fun, so please come. For our final presentation this evening, I would like to invite Tamala Takahashi to join me at the podium to help present the Halloween Decoration Contest winners. First, we have Michael, Kathy, Sam, and Noah Reyes. They've won first place in the residential category of the city's annual Halloween Decorating Contest. On behalf of the Burbank City Council, I congratulate you on this well-deserved award and applaud your efforts to make our community more festive. Thank you very much.
That's him, right there. That was Dr. Frankenstein. My wife is the bride of Frankenstein. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, we recognize Katie Riger, winning the youth category of the city's annual Halloween Contest. On behalf of the Burbank City Council, I congratulate you on this well-deserved award and applaud your efforts to make our community more festive. Thank you very much. Great job. The final presentation goes to La Providencia Guild of Children's Hospital, Los Angeles Thrift Shop, in recognition of winning the commercial category. On behalf of the Burbank City Council, I congratulate you on this well-deserved award and applaud your efforts to make our community more festive. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations all to the winners. My name is Tamala Takahashi, and I'm the Chair of the R Burbank Volunteer Group. We're the ones who put on the Halloween Decoration Contest and the Holiday Decoration Contest, the Walk and Talk with the City Council on Chandler and other events. It was a really successful Halloween Decoration Contest. We had 22 entries, and we drove around in a bus, and we looked at them all, and they were all, every single time we went to the house, we went, wow, wow, wow. It was really great. It was hard to decide. We had a bus full of judges ages 7 to 70, and we rated the houses based on creativity, originality, complexity, and the wow factor. We added up the points, and we have our three winners today. We had one from resident, and one from business, and one from youth. Our Burbank meets on the fourth Monday of every month in the Community Services Building at 5:30. Our next meeting is on November 25th, and any Burbank resident is welcome to join us and to help us plan for the Holiday Decoration Contest and judging as well. Kids are welcome as well. We had kids on the bus as well. And if you'd like to sign up for our newsletter to see what we're doing and when our events are coming, you can go to BurbankCA.gov/residents/RBurbank, or you can Google R Burbank, and it'll come up on Google. Congratulations to all the winners. Let's give a round of applause to all the entries.
Thank you, Ms. Takahashi, for your, all that you've done with our Burbank and for making Burbank a more festive place. Next, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do not have any notable events to report for tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask our city attorney to please report on the closed session.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council met earlier this evening in closed session under existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D1. There were two cases. One was Joseph Beck versus City of Burbank, which was a trip and fall case, and the other was Nichols versus City of Burbank, a wrongful termination. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for general public comment. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business or may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, including the consent calendar, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Please present a completed yellow general public comment card to the city clerk. Comments are limited to three minutes. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. Please remember to state your name when speaking at the podium. Our first speaker is Linda Wamsley.
Good evening. I am aware that you have some rules, and I am not supposed to ask you a question and expect you to answer right now, but I'm going to ask you to just kind of break that rule tonight. I'm going to ask you a question, and you don't have to answer verbally. You can either nod in the affirmative or shake for the negative, but I'm going to ask you this question. Are you aware that in Burbank, we are going to have a fabulous, state-of-the-art, new emergency room and urgent care center at St. Joseph's Medical Center? Oh, you answered. You broke the rules. Thank you. Well, it's coming, and it's a good thing. And it's a $78 million project, of which $62 million has been generously donated by lots of people in our city to make it a reality. And I'm here tonight to tell you and everybody in Burbank that you have an opportunity to participate in the fundraising for this. On Wednesday, November 20th, our friends down at Shake Shack, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., are going to let you come down there and have one of their really good burgers and a really good shake, and they're going to give us 25% of the profits that day, and it's all going to our new emergency room and to our new urgent care center. And it's all going to our new emergency room and to our new urgent care center. So I'm hoping that everyone at City Hall and everyone in the city of Burbank will go to Shake Shack that day and have a yummy treat and support our fabulous new emergency room and urgent care center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Tenenbaum.
Hi. I just need to say that this is the first time I've ever noticed that you're not using those single-use disposable coffee cups and water cups. I think, yeah, those are new. Congratulations. So, right now, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Sustainability Commission Outreach Committee. So we have these subcommittees. It's the Outreach Subcommittee. There's a lot going on. I'm not going to cover it all. But I wanted you to know that we've been having a table at a number of events, the Ladies and Gents Night Out, some other events. And since, I think this is new. I mean, you know, I started in January. But we used to not have, as far as I can remember, any public attending our meetings. And since we've really been working on the Outreach Subcommittee, now every time we have a meeting, we have lots of members of the public attaining our, attending our Sustainability Commission meetings. And in addition to people just sitting around the room and attending the meetings, we also have had, for the last number of meetings, people coming and submitting a card and speaking. So we have now public comment and attendees. And I think that that's greatly due to the work of the Outreach Subcommittee. And just, there's so many things that our public is telling us. And when I went to the training, I guess it was a week or two ago, they were saying that our job is to listen to the public and then tell you. So certainly, there's been a lot said. So I'll just tell you, one of the things that the public keeps saying to us is they're really concerned about the single-use disposable plastic. And they're hoping to have some sort of policy enacted soon so that people can bring their own reusable containers to get food. So that's the one big thing. And I'll tell you more about that in future. Then, now I'm not going to speak for the committee. I'm speaking for myself. I just want to tell you, next week, I do public speaking for a living. So I'm headed off to Barcelona where I'm speaking. It's called the Smart Cities Expo. And I'm a keynote speaker. I will be mentioning Burbank. I will be mentioning the Sustainability Commission, what we're doing in the city. And I'm also going to talk about the complete streets while I'm there. So think about me in Barcelona when I'm talking about you. All right? See you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Nolan.
Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council, I, my remarks are pretty simple tonight. It's not about the agenda. It's come to my attention that's the blog, various blogs, have called into question the relationship between our Vice Mayor and a local former businessman, now retired, Jack O'Neil. I have a regard for both of them. I've disagreed with the Vice Mayor on many occasions. I feel that when we get personal about our relationship between a man and a woman, it's none of our business. We should stay out of it. And I really feel strongly, I've been coming to these council meetings since I was 11 years old. I'm 71 now. They were church pews in those days. There's one still outside. But to go after the young lady because of who she may see socially is absolutely inappropriate. And it's none of our beeswax, as the teenagers might say. I took the liberty of checking with the FPPC. And I found out that not only had Mr. O'Neil checked with them, but that also our Vice Mayor had checked with them. She confirmed that tonight. That's ridiculous. The Fair Political Paraxis Commission and Conflict of Interest is based on economics. And our relationships that are personal, where we're not married, shouldn't have any impact on our public participation in meetings at all and in decision-making. And I feel it's, I, on behalf of whoever, I'd like to offer an apology to our Vice Mayor because I don't believe she should be subjected to it. And I feel the same way towards Mr. O'Neil. We've had disagreements over the years, for heaven's sakes. He's been around longer than I have. But I feel that there are certain lines that, when they're crossed, have to be acknowledged. And this is one of those times. And Madam Vice Mayor, I'm sorry it happened. And I don't encourage people to do it. And as far as this other issue goes, when people bring in out-of-towners, this is what we can expect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Janet Deal.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. I still am shorter than almost anyone else that gets up to speak. Our city manager, our staff, thank you all very much. My name is Janet Deal. I'm president of Burbank Coordinating Council and very proud to be here this evening, one last time, to talk to you about Spirit of Giving. Because, as Barbara was saying, Barbara Howell with BTAC, which by the way, was one of the projects that was created through a partnership out of Burbank Coordinating Council back in the day. So think about that. We knew there was a need for a food pantry year-round. And that's how it began. It's wonderful that we can all be partners, we can all be sharing, and we can all be giving help to our families that are low-income, at risk, and certainly those that are homeless as well. And as I have said before in front of you, we do have homeless families that we're helping this year as well. And everything that we make, all the profit, at this Spirit of Giving Luncheon, which is this coming Friday in three more days. And it will be at the First Presbyterian Church, starting at 11-ish, so people can get there and look at all the things to bid on, all our silent auction things, and get seated and comfortable. And our emcee for the day is going to be our honorable Vice Mayor, Sharon Springer. We're delighted. And the honorees for the day will be Charlene Tabit, who is on our school board, and certainly National Charity League, because the mothers and daughters have been working for so many years to help us with holiday baskets. And we try to make sure that we honor people who have been involved and are there on Delivery Day and there at our stores when we're collecting food. And a part of the project that is the largest service project, all run by volunteers and all to serve 2,400 people in our city each year. It's an amazing program. Your way to help would be to come to Spirit of Giving, pay your $65 for a ticket, easy to do, or become a sponsor, easy to do. And come and enjoy entertainment, honoring our special honorees, having a wonderful day, and then continuing on to help with the program. Be at a grocery store, collect food, help us bag the food, help us deliver to the families. Be a part of it. And if you are, you will know that your life has been changed almost as much as the families you're helping. So thank you very much for your time tonight. I hope we see you all on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Hampel.
Good evening, council members. I'm happy to be here tonight to offer my support for the bicycle bridge that's being proposed to go across the Los Angeles River. And this is one of those chances where we get to express our, the quality of growth in the city. And so not just quantities, but the quality of human mobility. And bring some composure and tranquility to our transportation system. I think that's really important, that we have a lot of human mobility capacity out there. I heard that we've added about 1 million cars to Los Angeles County in the last 10 to 15 years. And I think everyone feels it. And I think it's, it's an urgent call to bring more possibilities for all ages to move without a lot of, you know, motors, dangers, and things like that. So I'm very happy that we have this on the decisions, on the, on the agenda tonight. And this will help connect communities and bring us all a little bit closer together. So I want to thank you, I want to thank the staff for their good work. There's a lot of tenacity, a lot of commitment, and they've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any more speaker cards? Okay. That concludes public comments. And now's the time for a brief response from city council, city manager, and the city attorney. Mr. Frutos?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank Mr. Mike Nolan for your public comments. Appreciate that. And to Janet Deal, thank you, because you do this from the kindness of your heart and you do it year after year after year. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Mr. Murphy?
I would like to thank everybody for coming. Thanks to Linda Wamsley and the shout-out about the Urgent Care Center and Ms. Tenenbaum. I'd like to thank her for her service on the Sustainable Burbank Commission and on the Outreach Committee and enhancing the participation at that group, at that organization. And thanks to Mr. Mike Nolan for always speaking up. And Ms. Deal, just persistent, and the Energizer Bunny just never quits. And thank you very much. And to, oh, happy birthday. And to Craig Hampel, speaking up about the, the bridge, the bicycle bridge that we've waited for, for a long time, for many years. Thank you.
Next, we move to the consent calendar. It may be enacted in one motion. City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you. Item number one on the consent calendar, recommendation to approve city council minutes for October 15th. Item two, successor agency minutes, to approve successor agency minutes for the joint meeting of April 30th, May 7th, and May 14th. Item number three, housing minutes, approve the housing authority minutes for the joint meeting of August 13th and October 15th. Parking authority minutes, approve the parking authority minutes for the joint meeting of April 30th, May 7th, May 14th, and August 13th. Item five, public financing authority minutes, approve the minutes for financing authority for the joint meeting on March 5th. Youth Endowment Service Fund Board's minutes, this to approve the Youth Endowment Service Fund Board minutes for the joint meeting on March 5th. Adoption of ordinance to adopt 2019 California Building Standards Code and related code enforcement by the city. Item number eight, adoption of an ordinance appealing, amending, and restating the purchasing code Title II, Chapter II, Article I, and III of the Burbank Municipal Code. Item nine, adoption of the resolution to update Metro Measure R Highway Operational Improvement Project list to add funding for the Los Angeles River Bridge project. And item 10, adoption of resolution authorizing application for the receipt of Senate Bill II Planning Grant Funds. And before we move forward to take a vote, I would like to read the statement regarding item number nine. One of the attachments to the resolution was not included in the online version for the staff report. It was, however, included in the hard copy packet provided to the city council and available at the general public. The omission to the online version was corrected earlier this afternoon, and the public has access to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move consent forward.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
I'll take a vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on, I'd like to thank city staff on the SB 2 grant. Thank you very much for working hard on that and the $310,000 that we can certainly use. And thank you for just always being vigilant about that and applying for those grants. Thank you.
Tonight, we have three reports to council. The first is the City Treasurer's Investment Portfolio Report for August 31st, 2019. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with public comment. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on the item at the conclusion of the oral presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public comment. Please fill out a yellow general comment card and hand it to the city clerk. Will our Madam City Treasurer please present the item? Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Springer, Councilmember Frutos, Councilmember Murphy, and members of the community here today. My name is Crystal Palmer, and I'm the City Treasurer of Burbank. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the investment report for August 2019. Before I proceed, though, I would like to acknowledge the internal Fiscal and Treasurers' Review Group, as well as the External Treasurers' Overview Review Committee, and their support as I transition to this new role. So this monthly report is reviewed by both committees, and we meet twice a year. I'm very grateful for their feedback. I would actually like to acknowledge the names of the members of the committees today. So for the External Committee, we have Darren Guggenheimer, who's a president of the Game Federal Credit Union, Norlin Carras, former CEO of Cedar Sinai Federal Credit Union, Richard Martin CPA, Scott Rife, retired senior vice president at Boston Private Bank and Trust, as well as a pending approval, David Escobar, who's the first vice president for wealth management at UBS. The Internal Committee members are Councilmember Frutos, Councilmember Talamontes, City Manager Justin Hess, Assistant City Manager Judy Wilkie, Financial Services Director Cindy Geraldo, and Bob Liu, who's the CFO of Burbank Water and Power. I am very thankful for all their advice and support. Since I just started in this role a couple of months ago, I would also like to acknowledge everyone, other people who have supported me. I've met with the city attorney, the city clerk, Financial Services Director, a few council members, as well as the General Manager and CFO of Burbank Water and Power. I have also met with the city treasurers of the city of Glendale and Pasadena, and they have provided invaluable advice as I start this new role. So thank you very much. Let's proceed with that PowerPoint. So moving forward for tonight's agenda, I would like to go over the portfolio overview, the current economic conditions, as well as the outlook and strategy for the portfolio. I guess we can wait for that, because it's better to have graphs than me describing numbers. Okay, so here it is. Treasurer's Report, August 2019. Here are the three sections. So here, if we look at the historic market value of the portfolio, we see it's been growing steadily over the past years. steadily over the past years. Right now, the city investment pool is at $431 million plus another $17 million in our successor agency and housing authority. If you would look at the graph, there has been some drawdowns in July in the past few years due to our CalPERS payment. And we project that we will pay another $42 million in the coming 2020 year. So this is the breakdown of the $431 million in the city investment pool. As you can see, it's very well diversified. Right now, the biggest part of the portfolio is US agencies, which have implicit guaranteed the US government. They comprise 29%. The next biggest part of the pie is the corporate medium-term notes under our policy. That should be rated A or higher, and we really do our due diligence to make sure that we monitor the credits of these corporate notes. The next section of the pies, you can see, is the negotiable certificates of deposits. These are insured by the FDIC as well as the NCUA. They comprise 19% of the pie. You also see that we have approximately 15% in our local agency investment fund as well as 10% in the municipal bonds, which should be rated A or higher within the state of California with stricter limitations outside the state. In this slide, you see our, the compliance for the different asset classes in the portfolio. So under this table, you can see that the different asset classes meet the regulatory guidelines in terms of our legal maximum under California Government Code as well as Burbank's investment policy that was adopted earlier this year. This slide shows our maturity range. So currently, we're about 1.7 years. That's counting LEAF and 2.03 years not considering LEAF within the portfolio. So we're, we have a lot of liquidity right now. This is in anticipation of, you know, near-term cash flow needs. In the next few years, we hope this, to get this closer to 2.5 years in duration. So this slide shows the yield of our portfolio as compared to LEAF and a two-year moving average. So right now, as of the end of August 2019, we have a yield of 2.13%. I actually just received the numbers for September. That's 2.15%. So that's increased over August. If you can see, look at closely, so LEAF is that green graph. The interesting thing is it's, it's trending higher right now than our portfolio. The reason for that is that LEAF has a one-year ladder structure. So they've really benefited from the increase in rates in the later part of 2018 and early part of 2019. However, by, by middle of next year, spring next year, we expect that LEAF would be significantly lower in terms of returns. This is our quick income summary. So this has steadily increased over the past few years. Every month, we receive about $700,000 to $800,000 from our portfolio. So that's very helpful. So now I'd like to go over the current economic conditions. That way, we get some more clarity around our portfolio. So this is an interesting slide. So the current unemployment rate is 3.6%. In September, we reached 3.5%, which is a 50-year low. So when you think about it, we haven't had that level of unemployment since 1969. That's a long time. So a lot of people now have jobs, you know, everything's pretty good. There's, there's not a lot of wage growth per se, but it's good. Everyone's employed, people are spending. And as, as we know, most of this economy is really based on consumer spending. So inflation is still pretty, pretty good, I would say. As a consumer, 1.7%. It's below the Fed's target 2% level, but it's, it's not bad. It's, it's actually been below target in the past 10 years. So this is the Consumer Confidence Index. This is based on a survey of a random sample of different households. This, with this one, we saw a big drop in September. So now it's at 125. It's still pretty high compared to historical levels, but this is something that we continue to closely monitor to gauge the level of consumer confidence in the economy. So this slide shows our, the ISM Manufacturing Index, which is really based on a survey of supply management professionals. This gauges demand, outputs, deliveries. It's really kind of proxy for business investments. So while there's a lot, there's really strong consumer confidence in the economy right now, there's a lot of question from businesses. They're not really investing. They're not building factories. They're not investing in new capital equipment. And I think this really stems from the trade uncertainty we see right now, the upcoming elections next year. There's just a lot of questions right now. So businesses are pausing and waiting to really see what's going to happen. So based on this, let's look at our outlook and strategy for the portfolio. This slide shows the five-year treasury yields over the past five years. So right now, yields are really hovering around 1.6%. They've reached 1.3% back in August, and then now it's up to a 1.8% in September. But now it's really kind of like going around 1.6, 1.5, 1.6%. That's in stark contrast to the later part of 2018 and early part of 2019, as you can see in the graph, where we reached almost 3%. So that's a big difference. There's really not a lot of opportunities right now for great returns, but just today, we reached 1.67%, which is already much better than a few days ago. So we're hoping that this really ticks upward in the next few months. So this is the yield curve. So the top yellow line shows your normal yield curve. So normally, a yield curve shows that if you lend someone for a longer period of time, you should be compensated for your, for your time, right? So if you lend some money to someone for one year, that should be lower interest rates, I guess, than someone you would lend money to for 30 years. So that's what the top graph is showing. Right now, what we have is a graph, the green graph in the, down below. So the, in the short term, the yields are really pretty flat. For a two- and five-year note right now, you're getting about 1.6%. For a 10-year, you might get 1.8%. And for a 30-year, you get 2.3%. So there's some steepening of the curve in the longer term, but it's not really the same level of steepening as we would traditionally expect, as you can see in the yellow curve. So this is a graph that I believe you've seen in previous presentations. This is the world interest rate probabilities. This shows the expectations of a rate cut in the next few months. So following a cut in September, last, just this last October 30th, the Federal Reserve cut their rates again, down to 1 point, to a range between 1.5 to 1.75%. Based on his statement, Chairman Powell said that they do not expect to cut rates further, which is good. Based on what they've seen, the consumer confidence is still pretty strong unless it really deteriorates. They do not expect to do further rate cuts. At the same time, they also do not expect increases in the rates in the next few months. So based on this graph, as you can see, the expectation of the market seems to be that any rate cut would not be until the spring of 2020. So in conclusion, as always, our priorities are our safety, liquidity, and yield. Whenever we make a purchase, we do our due diligence and we make sure that we're in compliance with our investment policy as well as the California Government Code. We're always monitoring our credits, especially our municipalities and corporate notes. So we have alerts for Bloomberg for all the names in our portfolio. We're always analyzing the debt ratios of our holdings. We continue to build our five-year maturity ladder. So what we're doing is really strategically targeting maturities to match our cash flow needs. Given the market swings and the uncertainty that we see today, our goal is really to make sure that we get consistent and competitive returns. That way, we can ensure that we continue to serve the city's needs and that we don't get any surprises. Well, that concludes my report, and I believe this is a note and file, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comment cards?
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have questions?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I do have one. About four to five weeks ago, the press was releasing a report of all the 88 cities within the county of LA. And they were going through the top 10 cities that have the best finances. I don't understand why Burbank wasn't on number one. What's going on? What are your thoughts?
I am not familiar with the criteria they use to evaluate the cities. I did not hear from them. They did not solicit any information. So perhaps it was an oversight. I will look into that and do some more research for you and make sure that in the future, we are included in that list.
Yeah, because they, they were just basically, when I was listening to the report, just reviewing the finance policies, exactly how the cities are investing their money and basically how, you know, their finances. So I was just kind of curious if maybe at your next report to the council, if you can maybe put in the back of your mind, I'd like to know a little bit more about that report and how, what number of the top 10, obviously wasn't Burbank, but where do we sit amongst the 88 cities within the county?
Okay. I will look into that. Thank you so much.
And I do appreciate your report and your due diligence, diligences. And I remember during your interview, simplicity, how you would explain the finances, and I do appreciate your report.
Thank you.
It was very easy to understand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, do you have questions?
I don't have any questions. I think Ms. Palmer's hit the ground running, and I hear she's getting out there and everyone's impressed, and thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Our next report to council this evening is Burbank Homelessness Plan Update. Will Mr. Marcos Gonzalez please present the item?
I mean, he's a note and file that last one. Just, do I have to say it or?
Um, excuse me one minute, Mr. Marcos, one second. So the City Treasurer's Investment Portfolio Report, we just note and file.
Correct.
Thank you. We're ready.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Springer and council members. My name is Marcos Gonzalez with the Community Development Department. This evening, I will be sharing several updates on the city's homelessness plan adopted by council nearly two years ago. As you may recall, the plan focuses on seven solutions that take a holistic and humane approach to help people experiencing homelessness. Building off the progress we reported to council back in April of 2018, we have embarked on the second year. In this second year, we plan to implement public health and safety solutions, expand homeless services, and begin a storage program. These will be discussed in tonight's report. To understand these solutions, it's important for Burbank to look at the current homeless landscape and its complexities.
Yeah, start here. And I will, I'll just give you some data and we'll catch up on the report at the end. So according to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority... Okay. According to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, the number of people who are homeless in LA County for 2019 increased by 12%. That's nearly 59 people in greater Los Angeles. That's equal to half of Burbank's total population. In the last 10 years, the number of people experiencing homelessness has consistently increased in LA County. At the same time, Burbank has seen a dramatic increase in homelessness by 41% from 2018. Over a five-year period, that number averages about 206 people for Burbank. These record numbers cause us to pause and analyze why these numbers continue to grow. When we look closely at the cause of homelessness, we found the highest contributors are centered around mental illness, substance abuse, addiction, and systemic causes of homelessness. As reported by LSA, 29% of people who are homeless suffer from mental health, substance abuse, or addiction. Later, the LA Times reported that they believe the percentage was closer to 76%. These are huge discrepancies between both reports. Meanwhile, the mentally ill and people suffering from addiction and substance abuse are allowed to languish on the street. We cannot forcibly institutionalize people into mental or substance abuse treatment programs. Only a conservatorship can mandate treatment. The number of first-time homeless in Los Angeles County has also grown by 38%. This information suggests that many people were a paycheck away from becoming homeless, they lack familial support, or had an income inequality that could not absorb the high cost of living in cities like Burbank. Other active contributors are systemic causes to homelessness. These include a housing shortage and consequences from regulations and laws. As an example, court injunctions and lawsuits limit cities from enforcing anti-camping ordinances on public property unless an acceptable number of shelters or housing can be provided. According to LSA, there are approximately 31,750 units available throughout LA County. We will need to build approximately 28,000 more units to enforce any anti-camping laws. A recent audit from LA's City Controller evaluated the cost of building housing. It estimated at about $6,000, $600,000 apiece. As we look into Burbank's challenges, we're, we are not unique to the causes of homelessness faced by the region. Burbank has a total number of 209 people who are unsheltered in Burbank. Many are affected by mental illness, substance abuse, or addiction. Many are also facing their first episode of homelessness. Over the years, the city has invested in creating transitional housing and supported emergency housing. These investments allowed for 73 people to be placed into housing during the point-in-time Cities play a vital role in addressing homelessness. It all begins with minimizing the homeless needs and solutions into four smaller groups. Burbank's four groups are outreach, supportive services, housing, and legal enforcement. Outreach means the mobile... Outreach means the mobilization of case managers and services to where the homeless live. The city takes a proactive approach to consistently check on our homeless neighbors and offer them services. If a person is willing to accept services, then supportive services are coordinated. Supportive services include enhancing a person's quality of life, mental health, and other health services. The third group is housing. Should a person accept housing, every effort is made to navigate a person into a housing program that is available. Burbank supports funding programs such as emergency rental assistance, prevention, and rapid rehousing. Other long-term goals are to build temporary housing and affordable housing for all. And our final group is legal enforcement. Legal enforcement includes the implementation of a nuisance ordinance and a storage program. Enforcement is not going to resolve homelessness. However, it can be a vital tool to stabilize someone who is homeless from living, from who is homeless and living in an unsanitary condition. Burbank's two-hundred-and-eighty-two homeless population will be touched by one time, by one time or more of the city's homeless solutions at one time or another. Excuse me. Each is a tool in Burbank's response to Burbank's challenges. As the needs for services grow, the city will do what it can with limited resources. As a city, we leverage our local funds like the Community Development Block Grant, home investment partnership programs, federal housing subsidies, and the former successor agencies' low-moderate income housing funds for homeless programs. In 2019, a total of six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-thousand in funds were leveraged for homeless programs. These do not include any funds through Measure H that the city might have received. Further, the Downtown Property Business Improvement District also approved one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the Street Plus Hospitality and Social Service Outreach. Street Plus interacts with homeless to provide resources and promote a good neighbor policy in downtown Burbank. So Burbank's response is proactive and meeting with the homeless where they live. Dedicated and hard-working teams like Essentia, Street Plus, and the Burbank Mental Health Evaluation Team make this possible. In the last several months, Essentia has linked four individuals from Burbank to permanent housing. Ten individuals have received transportation funds to reunite them with their families through Street Plus. And the Met Team continues to provide mental health assessments and clinical support to the outreach teams. Other outreach efforts include an annual Homeless Connect Day that brings together close to thirty public service agencies. The homeless receive food, hygiene care, health checkups, and access to the coordinated entry system at these events. Organizations like Burbank Temporary Aid Center, Family Promise, Provincial Joes are among the providers at the Connect Day events. Looking ahead, we will be expanding the outreach teams by adding a specialized homeless services specialist that will assist people who are the most vulnerable living in the city of Burbank. The operator of this program will be Street Plus. The program will operate Monday through Friday between eight to five PM. Homelessness cannot be solved by one entity. Staff understands this, so we are committed to working in tandem with public and private partners to expand our systems of care. Burbank has begun to expand the delivery of programs for individuals and families who experience homelessness by hosting homeless provider meetings. And in these meetings, providers will meet once a month to increase dual communication among partners, problem-solve, and build their capacity through cross-training and technical assistance. Take, for example, the homeless gentleman in this slide. This particular person was chronically homeless for over a decade and was living in downtown Burbank for several years. A couple months ago, he was placed in an emergency recuperative care facility. This person is now working to be placed in permanent housing. This was accomplished due to the continuous outreach and collaboration from those involved. Often, it appears that our response to homelessness is not quick enough or humanitarian enough, but it truly requires persistency and an understanding of complexities around homelessness. The following slide captures the ongoing communication that is necessary to highlight the work Burbank is doing around homelessness. Burbank is represented at several external homeless meetings. With the support of Essentia's Homeless Service Liaison, staff is bridging the gap of services needed here in Burbank. Burbank is closely involved with several of these groups. One in particular is the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments Homelessness Group. Cities that form this group are Santa Clarita, Glendale, San Fernando, Burbank, and the city and county of Los Angeles. Through the Council of Governments, the County Board of Supervisors approved six million in Measure H funds to continue the city's homelessness plan implementations. Burbank will plan to complete for these funds. Homelessness is a mainstream topic. Therefore, staff will share our progress through various modes of communication. These modes include Burbank City Talk, social media, and other outlets. As shared earlier, the city is doing all that is possible to provide supportive services with limited dollars. However, implementing supportive services stretches beyond the city's funds and our homelessness plan. According to LSA, county teams have assessed and provided services to over two-hundred people in Burbank during the last twelve months. These services were provided using Measure H funding. How the city coordinates supportive services is by linking people to social service agencies and the coordinated entry system. The coordinated entry system is the region's method of prioritizing services based on the level, a person's level of need. Starting in 2019 and extending into 2020, staff is proposing to expand how information reaches the homeless by the way of an access center. The access center is an entry point to programs and services for people experiencing homelessness. Usually, other services in an access center include laundry, lockers, and showers. The goal would be to have an access center operating five days a week to alleviate the number of homeless people using the libraries as a day center. In 2019, the city, in partnership with Burbank Housing Corporation and Family Promise, completed the rehabilitation of a triplex for homeless families. Since the program began in March of this year, Family Promise has served four families. One graduated after five months. The Burbank Housing Authority receives an annual allocation of funding to assist twenty formerly homeless people with permanent supportive housing. Twenty participants continue to remain housed with Essentia's case management. In 2019, we hope to add a licensed clinical social worker to be part of the permanent supportive housing program. In order to house someone who is homeless, living on a fixed income, and usually with no rental history, it takes incentivizing our landlords. In 2019, the city received a grant in the amount of eighty-one thousand to provide move-in assistance and holding fees for landlords. The Burbank Housing Authority was successful in using these funds to house several of the twenty permanent supportive housing participants that are, that still remain housed today. Next spring, staff will be asking city council to consider amending the city's inclusionary housing ordinance for the development of housing. This and several other policies allow for the city to build the housing it so desperately Burbank is faced with the challenge of solving homelessness. In order to do so, we must have all the tools we need at our disposal, even if it includes legal enforcement when an illegal act is committed. As part of the Burbank's homelessness plan, this can be achieved through a nuisance ordinance and a storage program. Following this update, staff will introduce the nuisance ordinance to council. I would like to note that several city departments worked on the ordinance and procedures. Those departments included the city attorney's office, Burbank Water and Power, Public Works, Burbank Police, the library, Parks and Recreation, and the Community Development Department. All these departments are here this evening to answer any questions regarding the ordinance. To recap my presentation on Burbank's homelessness response, the city is faced with the record number of homeless at nearly fifty-nine thousand across greater Los Angeles. The city is continuing the second year of the homelessness implementation plan, which is focused on public health and safety, supportive services, and a storage program. The city will continue to do what we can to serve people experiencing homelessness by leveraging our limited resources whenever possible. As well, staff will continue to create a safe, beautiful, and thriving community for My presentation would not be complete without sharing several of the region's efforts to address homelessness. In 2019, the County Board of Supervisors allocated four-hundred-and-sixty million dollars to fight homelessness. This is the third year of the Measure H spending plan. The city of Burbank contributes an estimated six million annually to Measure H. To date, Burbank has applied and received four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in Measure H funds. The goal of the county is to widen and intensify its fight against homelessness. In the county of Los Angeles, new permanent housing is being built through the city's 1.2 billion homeless housing bond known as Proposition Triple H. The goal is to build ten thousand units in ten years. With the units coming online in Los Angeles, we might see less homeless that are filling, spilling over into Burbank that border the city of LA. The city and the county of Los Angeles continue to utilize the Housing First model. Housing First focuses on assisting clients to find housing rather than simply providing services. In 2018, LSA reports more than sixteen thousand individuals have been placed into permanent housing utilizing this model. Countywide, there are more outreach workers than before. The Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority and service providers are hiring hundreds of outreach workers, case managers, substance abuse specialists, and more. The last number identified was two-thousand-seven-hundred outreach workers for 2019. So what's next for Burbank? In short, in the short months ahead, the city will begin the storage program for people experiencing homelessness, and it will provide a place for them to store their personal belongings for up to ninety days. The storage program will also serve as a location for items that are forcibly removed from the city's general nuisance ordinance if approved by council. The city will begin to coordinate and perform abatements in areas that are determined to be a public health and safety risk. Burbank will add a dedicated homeless specialist to focus on the most vulnerable people in Burbank. Their program will be operated by Street Plus. And the city will continue to leverage the city's resources to expand programs such as homeless prevention, outreach, and mental health. Staff will also look downstream to begin planning for several long-term solutions. These include applying for new housing vouchers based on homeless demographics and urgent needs, continue our work in creating interim and permanent housing. This includes our ongoing partnership with nonprofit developers that support our homelessness plan, our regional housing need assessment, and support our accessory dwelling unit and inclusionary housing ordinances. Burbank will continue to work, begin, will continue to, excuse me, Burbank will continue the work we began in 2018 and find a location and operator for the access center. Finally, the city will continue to apply for local, state, and federal grants that will support the city's homelessness plan. That also includes our continued collaboration with the county and other partners to support our homelessness efforts. This concludes my report to council. I welcome any questions you may have. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment on this item. And it's Kelly Bergren.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Captain Kelly Bergerd with the Salvation Army. You may have read or heard that we have left Burbank. I just wanted to reassure you that we are selling our property right down the street from here, but we're going to continue to serve the Burbank population. Part of that is to partner with the city on the storage program that Marcos outlined. We were hoping to turn our building into an access center. Some of the last of funding that was supposed to go towards that didn't come through as we thought it would, so we're kind of regrouping our efforts. We've had a long-term plan of combining our churches between Glendale and Burbank anyway, so now this is the time that we're going to do that. We plan on selling our property here, but we would like to purchase property in another part of the city and be a part of the homeless initiative going forward with the access center. So right now, we would like to assure the city that we would like to operate the storage program. We've been working with Marcos on that proposal, and we hope to get that done in about two months here. So that is my comments to let you know that we have not abandoned Burbank. We're still here. We're serving the needs of Burbank right now out of our Glendale office. My wife and I have moved from Burbank to Glendale to take over what we now call the Glendale-Burbank area. So we'll continue to serve Burbank as we go forward here.
Thank you. Do we have other comment cards? Okay. Council members, do we have any questions of response? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for your report. I just had a couple of questions. And one is, how do we connect our unhoused to the coordinated entry system?
One of the ways that we can do that, through proactive outreach, through the Essentia teams, Street Plus, and through also the LA County teams that come to Burbank, all of them are trained on coordinated entry system and have access to the database. Actually, I think Street Plus is going to be trained on how to use the coordinated entry system. But that's one way that people who are sheltered or in the street, living in the street, that could be connected to coordinated entry. The other way is to, the way folks will go into a center, like Burbank Temporary Aid Center or Essentia, and that's where they will also be able to be connected to the coordinated entry system. And the final way is if we have events, like our Connect Days, and at those Connect Days, the main purpose is to be able to connect people through to the coordinated entry system.
Thank you. If we found somebody on the street and they were ready to have shelter, is that shelter available to them? Is there shelter available, a bed for them somewhere?
The shelter that's available currently are mostly located in Los Angeles, but there are, there is a shelter in Glendale through Essentia. There's a waiting list for those beds that they have. With the current, with the regional winter shelter programs are coming online on December first, there will be additional beds that will be available through that program. And the city is looking to partner with the Pacoima Winter Shelter to be able to get anyone from Burbank over to Pacoima if that's, if they're willing to accept the bed.
Okay. And if they go to Pacoima, are there services there?
Yes. They will have services as well as the coordinated entry at the various shelters.
Thank you. And how can our residents help? What, if our residents are concerned about... What, if our residents are concerned about a homeless person on the street, what, how can they best help that person?
So I would suggest one of those is to visit our homelessness website. Because on our website, it has various resources about where someone can go for shelter or if they're in need of emergency assistance. We have a list of different phone numbers and organizations that they can put people in touch with. The website also provides education about the complexities around homelessness. So if there is someone who wants to utilize a shelter, well, they can find out how and where those shelters are located and even provide that information to people. So it gives them that educational tool. But mostly, we ask that they contact the Essentia Outreach Teams, our Street Plus, or our office in Community Development, so we can link them to the appropriate services.
Can you share those phone numbers so that people can just input them in their contact list, like right now?
We do have them out in the lobby, and we have the brochures as well as the Police Department Resource Guides, and those have the phone numbers that people can call. So for Essentia, the phone number to call is eight one eight two four six seven nine zero zero. For our Street Plus team, that number. You might have to get back to you on Street Plus because that number's not on the brochure, but we do have it on our website.
Okay, and your phone number?
And our phone number is eight one eight two three eight five one eight zero. And I apologize, Street Plus is eight one eight three nine seven three seven nine eight.
Thank you. And if our Police Department Mental Health Team goes out, are they in uniform or are they plainclothes? It seems like it would be less frightening to a homeless person if they showed up in plainclothes.
If I might like to defer that question to police.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. So my name is Officer Snowden. I'm the currently assigned mental health officer for the department. Excuse me. My partner Sonia Casanova, who was introduced last week. We go as a team, and this is my everyday dress. It's what we consider a classy uniform, so kind of bring down the present so it's not so intimidating. That's pretty much it as far as presentation.
Okay, thank you. How often do you make contact?
Typically, we make homeless contacts on a weekly basis. We work with Marcos in his office, as well as referrals from our Police Department, and then also being proactive on our own.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you for your report. I have a little more kind of technical questions from my own knowledge. Of the two hundred and eighty-two, how do we collect the data to know about this number in our city?
The information is collected through a point-in-time count that the city of Burbank participates in. It's organized by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. And we count, there's three nights that counts are performed. So when Burbank does their count, it's only for the San Fernando Valley area. And this information is done by a visual survey. We won't talk to individuals or people living in their cars. We just tally who we see, where they're staying, and then all that information is submitted to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority then sends us the cities, our participants of the communities that participated in the count, the outcomes. And the outcomes are broad. They don't go into a lot of the details that would be sometimes helpful for the cities, but it at least gives us a framework of the number of people we have in Burbank at a specific point in time.
With this information, as we're obviously entering the winter months, and we haven't had a cold snap yet, but when we do, are we, as a city, ready to roll out blankets or services to help these individuals to keep them out of the cold? Are we prepared for that?
So what could happen with the preparation is with our faith-based groups would be places where we can look at getting those type of services to individuals. Also, the outreach teams, if we know we're looking at cold temperatures that are forecasted, what the Street Outreach Team will go out and do is they will start notifying every person they know about where to go for a warm place to sleep, and also where to go for perhaps additional clothing, like Burbank Temporary Center. So that's where proactiveness really plays a major factor when it's, when we're looking at inclement weather that's being forecasted.
And as people are entering the different types of services available to them, are we also collecting data, for example, of the two hundred and eighty-two, were they all Burbank residents or were they residents from another city, municipality that came into our city? And I guess where my comment slash question is, have we noticed if it's a trend, like let's say they're all part of manufacturing, and we know ahead of time that a corporation is getting ready to lay off X number of positions, do we, as a city, proactively prepare services for people that are getting ready to be homeless to help them? I mean, is there any data that we're collecting on that to help us better institute programs in anticipation of job losses or, you know, working with financial institutions, knowing that, hey, we've got in Burbank eighty families that are, you know, already behind on their mortgage payments? Is there stuff like that available to help us out or?
So on the data that, I understand those two questions, so on the data question that, how do we know if they're from Burbank or from other communities? The homeless count doesn't provide that type of specific information. The way we can determine that more is through the coordinated entry system. And because there are a set of questions that are asked, and one of those questions will be, how long have you been homeless and where did your homelessness originate? So there's information that we could obtain through the coordinated entry system. However, this data is very private, and some of the information is not always easily accessible. That's why when we talk about complexities, even data has complexities in how we share it. And in regards to predict, there's potential, there may be a crisis where someone, where there will be a large number of people who are maybe becoming homeless. For example, the example you use, a business that's closing down and people will be laid off. Well, that's, our teams are not set up to address large issues that have to do with layoffs and people becoming homeless. However, the county's Measure H dollars are really the ones that, the way that people can get more assistance if that does occur. And we would provide them links to those programs like prevention or diversion. And those are systems within the Measure H programs that will help people to get stabilized.
And just to add to that, Ms. McFarland, one of the things we do is if a company has a large layoff, they are required to issue what we call a warrant notice. And the warrant notice is sent to Economic Development, and we receive that, and we know that that company's going to be doing some layoffs. And what we do is we reach out to the company and see if they have, if they've connected, and usually they have, if they're filing the warrant notice because they know legally they have to do that. They've already connected to services that will help them. They have finding new job services, how to build your resume, how to apply for unemployment, and all of those types of things. And so they will automatically get connected when they file that warrant notice. The system will deliver those services automatically to them.
To your question, Marcos, can you talk a little bit about family promise and how they are helping to serve at-risk and rapid reentry and all that stuff? So when someone is facing that not having money to pay their rent or that type of thing, that we have a couple of different programs that help to intervene in those circumstances, right? So maybe we could speak a little bit to that.
That's correct, that when our family promise organization will help people who are circumstantially homeless and those that are literally homeless. So that's through programs such as a rapid rehousing that provides up to twelve months of rental assistance so that a person can get back on their feet. On top of that, they'll provide the case management. And the case management will include everything from employment to childcare to having to create a budget. And what they can also access through family promise is their day center, which provides them a place to do some, have quiet time, get to talk to their case managers. They can do their laundry there. They can even take showers. So these are places where there will be some cost savings for the people to be able to use the limited money on other necessities.
And then, and then my last question, comment, is, as we're moving forward in your last one about what's next for Burbank, you're talking about an updated policy, which is our next agenda item. What do we do, because you're talking about partners, and you talked about the different departments, but I didn't hear you talk about the animal shelter. What are we going to do when we have a homeless individual in his encampment and their only companion is their four-legged friend? What policy or what do you have, what do we do?
And what we're, when it's, if we're looking at policy, the policy where what we're pursuing is being able to address public health and safety issues and protecting the public right of way. So if there's individuals that are affected that may have a service animal and need that assistance, by all means, we will provide the referrals to where they can get that assistance, like the animal shelter. The purpose here is to be holistic and take a humane approach to how we address all our challenges. So that's what we intend to do, is not to criminalize this behavior or punish people, but to still take a holistic approach to it.
Thank you very much, both of you. Mr. City Manager, I know you worked on this. Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions at this point. Mr. Gonzalez, you said that the county set aside, would you say, four hundred and sixty-two million dollars?
About four hundred and sixty million.
Okay, and how many housing developments have they built with that money, and how long has it been available?
So the Measure H money that was allocated by the county, those are service dollars. So all the money is going more for supportive services or rental subsidies. It's not being used for production of housing units.
Okay, I thought you said they were building something in Los Angeles, and I've been reading in the paper where no one seems to want it in their neighborhood, so I'm thinking they haven't built any.
Yeah, and so if I could clarify, that would be the Proposition Triple H money through the city of L.A. So those units, their goal is to build ten thousand units in ten years.
How many have they built thus far?
So thus far, today, we've known that they're in construction. There are just no units complete yet, but there will be about two thousand units that will be done by the end of this year.
Okay, and the H funds, how long has that program been ongoing, about three years?
It's all three years. About twenty, two thousand and sixteen, I believe, is when the voters approved it.
Burbank's kicked six million in each of those years for a total of eighteen million?
Yes, correct.
And they decide what we get back, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so far, we've gotten four hundred thousand dollars back for our eighteen million dollar investment?
That's correct.
With a partner like that, life is good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. This item is note and file. Next, the final report is the introduction of a nuisance ordinance to enforce debris and obstruction abatements on public property. Mr. Gonzalez, please present this item.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and council members. As staff just shared with you, the city is faced with numerous challenges in addressing homelessness. One challenge is the legal removal of debris and personal property in the public right of way. In response to improving the public health and safety of all residents, the city is introducing two ordinances to council this evening. The two ordinances allow the city to legally enforce the abatement of debris and personal belongings in the public right of way. One is an urgency ordinance that is a way to perform abatements immediately, while a general nuisance ordinance takes thirty days from adoption to take effect. The urgency ordinance requires a four or five vote. Since we do not have the required votes this evening, the urgency ordinance can only be introduced. On November nineteenth, there's a second reading for the general nuisance ordinance adoption. On this day, the council may approve the urgency ordinance if it has a four or five vote. Homeless encampments can become an immediate public health and safety risk or a clear obstruction of vital city infrastructure. For this reason, we need a practical tool to abate these conditions. A nuisance ordinance provides the city this tool. More importantly, the nuisance ordinance limits our exposure to a lawsuit or injunction when attempting to forcibly remove personal belongings from the public right of way. Without the ordinance, the city is more likely to be sued as a result of an abatement. Staff views the ordinance as a manner of stabilizing the homeless who live in these conditions that are prone to health outbreaks, fire, and illegal activities. When legal enforcement occurs, this puts them in a position to accept services and housing. According to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, there are over two hundred homeless living in Burbank. For these two hundred and eighty or more vulnerable residents, we must take a holistic, humane approach in assisting them, even if it means that we must take legal actions when an illegal act is committed. Staff's solution is to have a comprehensive process in place as part of the nuisance ordinance. As part of the comprehensive process, staff develops standardized abatement forms. These forms are submitted by the city departments or a Burbank outreach team when a public health or safety risk is observed. There will be a process in place on tracking the growth of the public health and safety risk before an abatement occurs. This process will include photographs of the area during each encampment visit. There will also be notices and photographs taken when an abatement is performed. These are all several best practices staff researched to implement procedures for the nuisance ordinance. Other procedures that will be unique to Burbank include expanding Street Plus citywide to provide case management to the most vulnerable people that live in the encampments, deploying service teams to the encampment areas to provide assistance, convening an interdepartmental homeless group to coordinate abatements, implementing a storage program for items that are abated, contracting with the Salvation Army as the operator of the storage program, providing transportation of items removed from an abatement area to the storage facility, and performing environmental cleanups and securing the site with fencing whenever necessary. In addition, staff will approach each abatement with caution for those involved. In summary, while enforcement is an important tool for promoting public health and safety, it does not address the underlying causes of homelessness. With millions of dollars approved by the county of Los Angeles for services and programs, staff will continue to apply for funding to implement Burbank's holistic and humane approach to address homelessness. The proposed general nuisance ordinance is not meant to punish or criminalize people who are homeless, but rather to protect all residents. And it's important that we have every tool at our disposal. As the mayor stated at the State of the City, we intervene when we can and enforce when we must. This concludes my report to council. And I and the interdepartmental homeless group welcome any questions you may have about the proposed ordinance. Madam Vice Mayor.
I just want to add a tagline on, um, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, members of the council, just so we're clear. Because we don't have four members of the council tonight, we have two recommendations. One is introduce an ordinance of the council of the city of Burbank adding Section 52-311 Nuance to the Burbank Municipal Code. That is the only item that you will be acting on tonight. The second one was to introduce and adopt an urgency nuisance ordinance, which is the same exact ordinance, but it's would be an urgency measure, meaning it could take effect immediately. And we, um, set out in the urgency ordinance, all the appropriate language and findings that the council would need to make to have it become effective immediately. So the substance of the ordinances are exactly the same, but one's an urgency. And because there's only three of you tonight, you can't consider it. So when you come back on November 19th, thank you, um, you will be, uh, adopting, if the council introduces it tonight, the regular ordinance that takes 30 days to go into effect. And we will also ask you next, at the next meeting to introduce and adopt the urgency ordinance. And it would all be done on consent. So substantively, they're exactly the same. If doing an urgency ordinance will give us the ability to, um, proactively do, look at some situations, um, that we feel may be beneficial to, um, not necessarily take away an encampment, but to help clean up the area surrounding. And right, yes. And the city manager is saying, and not have to wait the 30 days. So having the urgency ordinance means it would go into effect if the council was to introduce and adopt it on the 19th. It goes into effect immediately.
Thank you. So tonight, well, the recommendation is listed is just to introduce the ordinance, right?
Introduce the number one, that ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? Okay. Council members, any comments, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Sure.
I only had just have one comment and obviously being a policeman, I've worked on homeless issues. Um, the one thing I didn't hear you say is video cameras. Video cameras are a whole lot better than photographs. Because you have to document when you go out there 48 hours ahead of time notifying them. And you put a note on their tent, you put a note on fences. And then when you go there, you document video with everybody that's there with all the resources. Because agencies that have not done that, Orange County was a classic case. They didn't use videotape, especially now that officers have body cameras. That we're doing this in a humane way. And you can clearly see that we've researched everything because, as you know, uh, LA had received several injunctions. Because when they were arguing their position, they didn't have all this added documentation. So I just want, just to bring best practices like you said. And I've actually worked on some of these homeless encampments, including, uh, helping out the Union Pacific Railroad along San Fernando Road. And the big issue was documentation, you know, 48 hours before you went out there and you put signs up, you put notes on their tents and you communicated with people that this is what the next step is. But I like the report. I am going to be supporting moving this forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Frutos, I'd just like to say that, uh, we are looking at procedures that are work in progress and that is definitely something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for your report. I have one question. On page three of the staff report, it says that, um, a key, a key component of coordinating these resources is the city's Street Plus outreach team, who currently serves downtown Burbank, but will soon take on additional work citywide. So when is soon? And, um, how will you exactly do citywide?
So that, right now, the contracts with, uh, Street Plus have all been signed. We're just waiting for, I think, to dry on those contracts. But we also are waiting for the County of LA to approve our, our implementation grant. Because part of how we're being able to fund that program is through our application to the County of LA for $340,000 to provide different programs. That's one of the programs. So we're, um, hoping to have this program started by, uh, later this month. And how they're going to be able to get out citywide, because bicycles will not serve that purpose, and that's how they currently operate here in downtown Burbank. They're going to be looking at purchasing a utility truck. So that way they can go to different sites throughout the city of LA. And that utility truck is key for them because that's one way they can put stuff into the truck and bring it to the storage program if someone is agreeing to voluntarily store their belongings at the, at the storage program.
And I just want to add to that. So one of the things that we're looking at having, uh, Street Plus do when we bring them on board is give them like a caseload. So we will identify certain homeless people in our community that we want them to visit. And we will ask them continuously, to continuously visit those people on that list. And so as we hear from the community about new homeless people arriving and concerns that the community has, those people, if it are appropriate, they'll be put on that caseload for that new person.
Thank you. And, um, when you said to take the utility truck, I think you said in LA, you meant Burbank, right? Or they're going to be doing LA also?
No, I'm sorry. That's only for Burbank. The utility truck would just be solely for the Burbank, city of Burbank.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So do we have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll introduce a motion. Introduce an ordinance of the city, council of the city of Burbank adding Section 5-2-311 Nuance to the Burbank Municipal Code.
Okay.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who would like to go first?
Oh, no, I, I wouldn't think of it.
You'll, you'll be surprised. I had a really busy week. I hope you're sitting back, guys. I only had one activity.
Wow.
Uh, on yesterday, uh, November the 4th, I attended the Burbank Sister City Committee. And I'm very happy to report that next week, they're having 20 applicants wishing to participate. And they're having their interviews probably in the next two to three weeks. But, uh, it's definitely, uh, pretty exciting for our Sister City, uh, program. And, um, that's all I have to report this week. So I was kind of taken back this week, a little, little R and R.
Thank you.
I would have sworn I saw you at the staff Halloween party, uh, in a, in an excellent costume. Okay, um, well, I didn't do much more. I, I went to the staff Halloween party. It was really nice, uh, to see everybody in, in costume. And it was nice just to talk, you know, we weren't, um, doing business. It was just, it was just great to sit down and talk to people. The other, uh, event I attended on Saturday was the Zanta Club. Uh, organized a, uh, party to celebrate, uh, another great year and also to thank their sponsors. It was a very nice event, very well attended. They, uh, had champagne and, and a pretty good cake. And it was nice to meet everybody there, people from all over, uh, the county and, uh, see all the people and also see the historical, uh, archives on, on a continuously running tape. So, thank you, Zanta.
Thank you. I attended the BTAC Volunteer Recognition Luncheon. That was a very nice event. Recognizing all the volunteers, um, at BTAC. I attended the, um, 30th anniversary concert of the Burbank Philharmonic Orchestra. That was a very nice, very nice concert. And, um, just yesterday, I attended a round table, um, with Caltrans, State Senator Portantino and County Supervisor Barker, along with our city manager, uh, Mr. Hess, Patrick Prescott and David Criskie to, um, have the supervisor and the senator intervene on our behalf to have Caltrans, um, better manage the I-5 project, to clean up, um, the debris that's been left behind before they move on to the Burbank Bridge, um, complete the punch list and attend to the railroad scar that, um, has just not been returned and has not been returned to, um, an acceptable state, nor has it been landscaped. And the next meeting is scheduled for mid-January to, as kind of an accountability meeting. Mr. Hess, do you have anything to add to that? Okay. Thank you. This is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Yes, Mr. Frutos?
Mr. City Manager, as we're slowly ending this year, I'd like to request from our police department to get a report out on our per capita crimes. How are we standing with our neighboring cities? I wanted to, North Hollywood, Sun Valley and Glendale? Just to see to our neighboring cities. I don't need to report across the county, but just in our cities. I want to know where we're trending, what's happening with our Capital One crimes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
I noticed in the Park and Rec Board minutes that they had, uh, a report on how the golf course was doing as well as, uh, the Starlight Bowl. And I'd like to see, um, that presentation or an update, uh, at their convenience. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We now adjourn to Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor for a regular meeting. Thank you.